And good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City School Board Meeting for the month of January. We are very glad to have all of our visitors, students, and parents in our midst tonight. Welcome. I hope you'll come back soon, real soon. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Lori Offit, Principal at Reeves Rogers, and to introduce our students who will lead us in our pledge. After our pledge, we'll have our moment of silence. Ms. Offit?
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. First of all, I want to thank the board for being very supportive of Reeves Rogers as we opened up. It's been a wonderful school year, great first semester. Thank you, guys. Now, Mr. Campbell, the last time I was here talking about the mascot, I'd mentioned the Mustang convertible being delivered to the school, and it hasn't arrived yet. So I just wanted to mention that one more time.
I'm so sorry. Dr. Gilbert told me she'd take care of that, make it in your school color.
Yeah, Dr. Gilbert. You can just take care of that this week.
Tomorrow it'll be there.
It's in the mail, Ms. Offit.
Thank you. I'm gonna be looking for it. 1807 Greenland Drive. So I'm gonna start looking. Alright, it is my pleasure to introduce, first of all, two wonderful kiddos, Lenny Jean Bunty, come on up, Lenny Jean, and Madeline Crumley. They have a coin first to show our appreciation at Reeves Rogers for our school board.
Our school is more than books and desk and learning to us too. It's people who share their skills and care.
Valuable is the work you do, supportive, sincere, and full of good cheer, your entiring and your efforts throughout the year. Please accept our heartfelt appreciation. We are so grateful for your dedication.
Thank you, girls. Kiddos, come on up for our pledge, please.
I'd like to ask you to please stand for our pledge. Please remain standing for our moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, night by the states of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our moment of silence. I cannot think of a better way to start a school board meeting than to have students participation, and I hope that you will come back again very, very soon. At this time, I'd like to ask, do we have an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye. Any opposition? And of course, there is none. Communications, Dr. Gilbert?
Yes, at this time, I'd like to present Dr. Kim Fowler and Jenny Ortiz. They are the principal and assistant principal at Bradley, and I want them to talk a little bit about Bradley, and then I think we have a special presentation by Bradley. As you know, Bradley is our arts integrated school, and I want to thank these two ladies for their leadership and the faculty there, and thank the parents who are here, and also the children who are here tonight to support their school. Go for it.
Good evening, and thank you again for your support to the entire school board. We appreciate all that you do for us, and you do make a difference for us, so we appreciate that.
And I'd like to say a special thank you to the school board as well for being so supportive of our programs and having the arts, being allowed to do the arts integrated at Bradley Academy. At Bradley Academy, we have one of, I think, only three art programs for elementary school students in the state of Tennessee. And this past, I guess it's been about two weeks ago, our students had the opportunity to go to iTheatrics. At iTheatrics, they were there with middle school students and high school students, and I'm sure Ms. Isom will tell a lot more about that. But it took a lot of work by our parents to make that happen. So I, at this time, I really want to look at my parents and say thank you for the sacrifices that you made in raising money and for being supportive of our school, and I'm really honored to be your principal and very proud of the opportunity that you gave these kids by working together. This group of people raised about $20,000 for the opportunity for our students to do that, and that is not an easy task, and I'm very proud of my parents and the work that you do in helping us each and every day. You guys are the best. And I think my boys and girls, we would give you a big applause. And obviously, teachers and staff, so, I mean, but I did want to support my parents this evening and just let you know how much I appreciate and know the sacrifices you made to make this happen. Thank you.
Ms. Isom, better known as Ally.
Okay. How does this thing work? Do I just click something? Okay. So, we went to the JTF Festival. Does it show? I don't really know. It's on the computer screen.
It should be coming up. If it's there on the screen, then it'll show. Should.
So basically, we just kind of wanted to cover just what we went to, so you know. So JTF, it's the Junior Theater Festival, and it's the largest celebration of musical theater for young people, and it's held annually in Atlanta, Georgia, and it's produced by the iTheatrics.
Okay, hang on just a second, Ally. I want to make sure that we show this. This came to us. Ally, actually, you came about a year ago wanting to do this, I think, or more, and she had heard about this and realized what an opportunity it would be for her children to go to this, and so I really want to thank her for her leadership. Also, while we're waiting, I also want to thank, again, Dr. Fowler and Ms. Ortiz for their support, and school board members, you all had something to do with this. You've been very active with your support of this school, so I want to thank you for that, too.
Personally, it warms my heart to see the arts, especially theater, in our elementary school. That's so exciting.
Alright, let's try it again, Ally. If it doesn't work, we'll just keep going.
Okay. Anyway, I can continue. But it's always held over Martin Luther King Weekend, and so we can always count on that, and it's always held in Atlanta at the Cobb Galleria Center, which is awesome because it's only four hours away from Murfreesboro. There are three countries that attend, and 101 groups, and 4,500 participants. And if you saw the image, it has a huge image of, like, the huge area, large area group where we meet. So what we were tasked to do was to take these kids and perform 15 minutes of a Broadway Junior show to be judged and participate in workshops, and they were able to see other student performers and watch other performances by their peers. They were so amazed to see that there were kids their age performing and doing exactly what they do, and it was just so exciting for them. And I am super proud to be able to know that I could take them with me so that they could perform. So when we got there, we did rehearsals. They only give you 30 minutes to rehearse, so you have, like, a space that you have to practice in, and you can't go over 15 minutes, or they take points off. So you have to be very stringent about your time. Then they went into performance and then adjudication. As soon as they're done performing, they are judged right away. The kids sit down in a little semicircle, and they are, the judges start to talk to them about what they loved, what they wanted them to work on, and these were adjudicators from New York that work with children professionally, and they were extremely pleased with our kids. So it was really exciting for the kids to know that they're doing such a fabulous job. Everybody that goes to JTF has the opportunity to experience the transformative power of musical theater through watching performances, attending workshops, and making connections with other musical theater groups from around the world. Some of my kids got to go to a technical workshop, which I haven't done a whole lot of tech since I taught high school, and so I was able to send some of my kids that run all the sound and lighting at the Center for the Arts to these workshops. And the groups were so impressed, not only because they were the youngest group, but I also have my students run all the sound, that they definitely wanted them in their tech track, and one of them was picked as an All-Star for tech. And so what that meant for him was he got to go backstage and see all the famous people and help put microphones on, and he got to just train with them. There was a point where one of the other kids who was older asked who his union was gonna be when he got older. He wasn't quite sure what that meant, but he just smiled. He's like, okay. My actors got to go to dancing and acting and vocal workshops, and I'll also have this PowerPoint on our Bradley website, because we also will have this awesome video of what the kids thought about being at JTF for you to see. They're also able to make a lot of connections, because they also talked about The Lion King is coming out, and the kids got to look and watch how they put makeup on, or what, like, pulling into African culture and what that would be like. So there's just a lot of connections that were happening for these kids, and then making connections with other kids their age that were performing. The kids were able to see, his name is Luca Padovan, he is 11 years old, and he's in the newsies on Broadway. They got to hear him perform, and so they were shocked to see somebody their age performing. Also, Lila Crawford, who's in Into the Woods, they got to see her as well. She is 12. And then they were really excited to see Robert and Kristen Anderson-Lopez. They wrote Frozen, all the music to Frozen, and they performed for them, and the kids were like, what? They wrote it? They were really excited about that. They also got to see live performance from Megan Hilty. If you don't know who she is, she played the next Elphaba in Wicked after, what can I think of her name? Kristen Chenoweth, yeah. And so just hearing just good performers. And then all of the performers that performed were young kids, and they were phenomenal. And these kids, just since we started rehearsing this past week, have upped their ante in rehearsal. It's been awesome. Our new motto is, we practice for, what did we say? Practice for, practice for permanence, because it's gonna be permanent. It's not gonna be perfect, it's gonna be permanent. They also got to see Thomas Shoemaker. He sketched Scar, like, right there on stage, and then they put makeup on the actor for Scar, and so just right in front of them. Let's, and then we'll talk about winning awards, because our kids won awards. Broadway Slam is something that the kids were in. It's one of the most anticipated events of the festival. They have creative teams and casts. They're selected at random, and they only have one hour to rehearse a song and a dance to present on the huge main stage. Then there was our All-Stars, and they were selected specifically from the performance, from adjudication. And they are going to, they participated in exclusive workshops, and they were given a huge opportunity to perform during the Freddie G. Awards Ceremony, and they don't know this yet, because I just got an email this week, but those two All-Stars are going to be offered an opportunity to go to New York to take workshops there. They don't know that yet, but yeah, it's pretty exciting. And then one of my students, so fabulous, he got the most inspirational performer, because he never gives up, and his trophy was, like, this big, and I asked him, what did you like about this trophy? And he's like, oh, the ladies said hi to me. So he's an inspiration to all. And then I also received a huge honor. It's called the Freddie G. Award, the Freddie Gerstein Music Theater Award. He's the chairman and founder of Broadway Junior, and every year they only pick eight theater educators, and they're invited by Freddie Gerstein to join him in New York City for a theater experience, and we get to go in the summer for an entire week, so I can work with, like, professionals. And I also received $5,000 for my musical theater department. But I told my kids that would never be possible without them, because they're the reason that I'm able to do what I do every day, and I love them for that, and I'm so grateful. And then I think that's pretty much it, but we will put our slideshow up for you and our video, because they have the cutest video of what they loved about JTF. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Thank you all so much for being here. Board, would you please join me with another round of applause for them?
Felt like I was on Pirates of the Caribbean.
I'm not too sure, some of you don't need to get ready for America's Got Talent. It was awesome.
And they will be presenting Peter Pan later this spring. I don't have the dates with me, but they'll have it on the website.
March, 2015.
Okay, great.
Where was it at?
Sixth and Seventh, and Thirteenth and Fourteenth, Twentieth and Twenty-first, so it looks like three weekends.
At the Center of the Arts. And we certainly appreciate the partnership with the Center of the Arts, too, to have them there. It's really special, but quite a good group.
Fantastic.
Quite a good group.
Well, never mind.
As you know, this week is School Board Appreciation Week, and we certainly appreciate you. You'll notice that, once again this year, and I think probably decked out more than it's ever been, we have the council chambers pretty much taken over by the Happy School Board Week, and so we certainly thank you for your leadership and what you do to support the schools. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Ron Washington, who has a proclamation.
Good evening, Board. I'm going to ask the chairperson and, and director, you come down, if you don't mind, while I try to read this long thing. I've got to leave here and go to the 2035 Comprehensive Plan Communiting Meeting, the third one for you and the public, and I'm on the task force with about 15 to 16 others. So I'll be leaving you, good people, to show my support for that. On behalf of Mayor Shane McFarlane, Vice Mayor Doug Young, Bill Shackleton, Manal Skales Harris, Eddie Smollett, Rick LaLance, and myself, we are here to read this proclamation to you, you board members, for School Board Week. Whereas an excellent public education system is vital to the quality of life of our communities and to the economic development of our state, and it really is, and whereas school board members present a tremendous resource as local decision-makers, diligently working to meet the challenges of a dynamic world while ensuring that every child receives the services needed for a quality education, and whereas school board members recognize the importance of improvement and progress in education and accept the responsibilities involved with implementing those initiatives, and whereas the men and women elected by the people as members of our local school board deserve recognition and thanks for their countless hours of service to public education in Tennessee. Now therefore, I, Shane McFarlane, Mayor Murfreesboro, do hereby proclaim the week of January 25 through 31st, 2015, School Board Appreciation Week in Murfreesboro, Tennessee, and urge all citizens to join me and its worthy observers. Thank you for your tremendous service. I present this to you.
Thank you, sir, very much. We appreciate you and your work with us, and we also appreciate the working relationship we have with the city council. Thank you for being here with us each time we meet. We depend on you a lot, and you're a good person to be on our side. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
While we're stopped here, can we just take a minute and thank the, thank, I just want to take a minute and thank the schools for going to all this trouble for all of us, and I know the principals and the teachers and the kids involved. It's so neat. It's always such a nice thing to come to every January. I especially appreciate the book. I hope that's not a self-portrait there. And I love that the kids get to have the book. I hope to come and read this at Pitter, and I really appreciate the big basket from Mitchell Nielsen and all the little letters and pictures we've got up here. I always, I always read them. I always look at them, and at least one goes on my wall at home every year. So thank the teachers and principals very much for helping us celebrate this week.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members?
Many, many things, and I think we also had a gift here from MEA and several different places, and I know that I can't name them all because I haven't gotten to open them all, but we are so thankful and appreciative for all the work that you do. We can't do our job without you, so thank you so much.
I echo the same comments.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much.
It's overwhelming.
We do appreciate our employees of the school system and all the work that they do. We appreciate the principals and everybody else. It takes everybody to educate the young people of Murfreesboro. We thank them very much for their dedication and their hard work at the same time, and I think I could easily say that the members of this board certainly do enjoy working with you as educators and trying to help provide what we can for not only our employees of the school system, but mainly for our students within Murfreesboro City Schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for what you do, very much. We have several thank yous tonight, and we're gonna try this a little differently, so I hope John can pull this off, but we decided we have such a long list, particularly when you try to do something like take Bradley to Atlanta, there are a lot of thank yous that we need to give. So we have about three slides of thank yous to the folks who have helped with Bradley going to Atlanta. They had a tremendously successful trip, and I think you'll hear more and more about Bradley. So we thank all those who have participated in helping Bradley go to Atlanta. We also have a list for folks who helped during our holiday season of sharing. This is something that we do every year, and it does take a tremendous amount of help from the community, but these people help with our children or families who might not have the Christmases that we have and would not have a good Christmas without their help. And then finally, we have some announcements to make. We would like, Hobgood would like to thank Club Yes for providing financial support for their families and their students, and also support in the form of food and clothing. And then Community Outreach has several people to thank, but we have some announcements to make. We have the African-American Journey, which will be at Patterson Park. This is a community celebration. This will be on Thursday from 4:00 to 7:00. There will be cuisine. There will be art. It's quite an event, so everyone is welcome to come to that. We also have our Foundation Excellence in Education that's coming up very shortly. We've been talking about this for quite a while. This will be on Friday, February the 6th, and it will honor Mayor Tommy Bragg, former Mayor Tommy Bragg, and his wife Jeannie. Mitchell Nelson will be the featured school. Tommy and Jeannie were the presidents of the PTA there several years ago. And then finally, Kason Lane will host the Lizzie Slider, I knew I couldn't say this, Bully Prevention School Assembly Tour on February the 26th at 12:45. So you are all welcome to attend that, and again, we encourage you to participate in the Excellence in Education and also the African-American Night that we're coming up really very shortly. And those are your communication items.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. Consent items? Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. King. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and there are none. Alright, action items?
We are asking for a board representative on the Coordinated School Health Advisory Board. Coordinated School Health is a program. Every school district in the state has Coordinated School Health. It is funded by the state. There are eight components that are There are eight components that are related to this program. They range everything from mental health to physical health to emotional health. Our program here in Murfreesboro administers the diabetes grant. And also, you heard last board meeting that we would be engaging in the farm-to-table grant, so that runs through our coordinated school health. And also, coordinated school health is very helpful with the Junior Chef Program. Mary Lee Smith is coordinator. She was here at the last board meeting. She works closely with Joe Marlin on the 504 compliance that we have with the district. She also facilitates health screenings of kindergarten, second grade, fourth grade, and sixth grade students. And then we have health report cards that are sent home subsequent to that. Mary Lee is also the contact for the mobile health unit and the dentistry link, so all of that comes underneath coordinated school health. There is a council. It consists mainly of nonprofits and also education groups like MTSU and some other groups here in town. But we are required to be in compliance, to have a board representative on that council, so I would ask that that is appointed tonight, please.
All right. Ms. Veneer has volunteered quickly. Anyone else like to serve on the council? All right, Ms. Veneer, thank you very much. Dr. Gilbert, Nancy Veneer, as I represent...
I have it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Veneer.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Reports and information?
Yes, I'm going to primarily turn this whole section over to Mr. Anderson.
Okay, thank you. Board, we have for you tonight your audit report. We have the audit team from Crossland Associates. I'd like to ask them to come up. Angie Hoke is the main auditor, and with her is... Oh, where's your name? What was I doing? Avanell, I'm sorry, Avanell. They did the audit for us as part of the team, and they've come to give the report. I have for you the information for you that they present in addition to the books that you already have. Sorry, Avanell.
Good evening, everyone. I'll give you a chance to get your book in front of you because we're going to walk through it. As Mr. Anderson said, my name is Angie Hoke. I am an audit principal with Crossland and Associates, your audit firm. And I was the principal in charge of your audit this year, working with Avanell and the rest of our team. This report includes our required communications that we make to you as the board at the end of the audit, and just kind of summarizes what we were engaged to do and what those results were. So the first page, you'll find our responsibilities under generally accepted auditing standards and also the OMB Circular A133. And the auditing standards require that we do an audit on a test basis to provide reasonable assurance regarding whether the financial statements are free of material misstatement. And then the A133 component is where we test the compliance around the grants and the federal and state funding that you get. On page two, it talks a little bit about our plan, scope, and the timing of the audits. We plan the audit using a risk-based approach to be efficient and effective, and that means we get an understanding of the Murfreesboro City Schools' processes and operations, and we design our audit based on the risks that we identify. And we work really closely with management to understand that. Additionally, we talk with management throughout the year to answer questions, to talk about any issues that come up, so that we can try to avoid any surprises during the audit process. Our team consisted of a combination of returning team members who had significant engagement knowledge, and also some new team members, myself included, who bring a fresh perspective to the audit to make sure that we have fresh eyes. We also all have experience with governmental entities and schools, and we have to get a certain amount of continuing education every year, so we all comply with that. In connection with our audit planning, we identified several areas of audit emphasis, which are at the bottom of page two, and they correspond to the significant line items that are in the financial statements. On page three, the discussion continues, and it talks about that we continue to focus on enhancing our service to be sure that we meet or exceed your expectations, and that one of our primary goals is to meet all the deadlines and to work closely with the city and the city's auditors to be sure that we're fulfilling their needs as well. And we're pleased to report that all that went really well this year, which we cannot have done without the support of management. Additionally, our relationship with the city accountants and their auditors continues to be strong and positive. The bottom of page three talks about the qualitative aspects of accounting practices. So the school system has a set of policies that they follow for accounting purposes, and we evaluate those as part of the audit to be sure that they're reasonable, in line with what other entities use, and there's nothing too aggressive. And we found that they were all reasonable, and they're consistent with prior years, and they're actually disclosed in the footnotes to the financial statements. On page four, we disclose any difficulties encountered in performing the audits, and we did not have any to report. We also, as part of the audit, obviously, we identify any misstatements that we find, and management is really good about recording anything that comes up during the audit. And there wasn't, there's nothing significant to report there for the current year. We did have a couple of things that came up during the audit that required some adjustments to the beginning fund balances. I think you guys have talked through that. The primary one was where we always confirm with the city how much debt is outstanding, and because of a change in the process, a piece of it was left off in last year's audit. The city identified it this year, communicated to us, and that got recorded and corrected. Other audit findings or issues. From the A133 perspective, we do a lot of testing around compliance with federal programs. And I'm pleased to report that we only had one finding. It related to certifications from employees. It was not so significant to require us to modify our audit opinion, so you still got a clean opinion. And management has already addressed the issue. There was one finding in 2013 that did not recur in 2014, so I'm pleased to report that as well. Disagreements with management. Whenever there are disagreements with management, we report that to the board so that you're aware of that, and there were none. Management representations on page five. An important part of our audit is getting representations from management about all aspects of the audit. And the letter that we actually get is attached, is Exhibit A. It's really standard letter, but it is the basis for our audit, and so we did get that. Fraud and illegal acts. We don't design our audit to detect fraud, but we are on the lookout for it, and we did not identify any fraud or illegal acts as part of our audit. Management consultations with other accountants. This really refers to opinion shopping or getting a second opinion on an accounting issue. That's where if management didn't like something that we said, they might go to another firm and ask for a different opinion, and they're required to notify us of that. That did not occur, as far as we're aware. Matters discussed prior to retention. If there were any concerns prior to us accepting the engagement or prior to you hiring us, we would communicate those to you, and there were none. And then the last item on here is other material written communications, and it refers, again, to the management representation letter, which I already mentioned. So overall, I want to just report that you had clean opinions all around. The audit went really well. As always, we really enjoy working with management and working with Murfreesboro City Schools. Are there any questions?
Any questions from members of the board? We thank you very much. We... Mr. Anderson, congratulations to you and your staff for a very good report from our auditors from our last school year. Thank you, fiscal year.
Thank you, sir. Obviously, it's the staff that does all the work that deserves the credit for it, so I thank Beth and the rest of the finance staff for what they do to keep us in good standing.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am, for being with us.
Thank you.
And bringing us a good report. Mr. Anderson?
Okay, the next item is your budget development timeline. You had asked me at the last meeting to bring back to you some possible changes to look at it, so you had more time to go over the budget. It's attached in there, but I wanted to tell you the changes. The changes are, we had the original date to distribute the proposed budget to the board on April 1st, and the new date I moved it to was March 25th, to basically give an extra day, I mean, I'm sorry, an extra week for the board to have it, to go over it, and then to schedule possible meetings, to go over and work sessions, as many as you feel you need. The original was from April 2nd to the 13th, and we've now moved it to March 25th to the 13th, which builds an extra weekend that you can meet to go over the budget if you would like. The final draft to be sent to you after you work through the budget, we moved it from April 21st to April 17th, so we picked up four extra days for you to have it ahead of time to go over it again after you have worked it through, and we put together your final draft. And then, of course, the vote would come at your April 28th board meeting for the final vote. We've picked up approximately three weeks for the board to have to work on this in addition to what we had in the original proposal. So I just want to, if that's okay with you, that is our proposal for the budget timeline. Its information is not, you don't need to vote on it. Just wanted to make sure everybody was okay with that, if we need to do any other tweaking.
Any questions, comments about the new timeline? Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Okay, the next item is the expense report and where we are at this time. Right now, we're, the report that you have is through December 31st. It is at the 50% time of the year. It shows our net income through that time is negative $2,633,894. Last year at this time, we were negative $2,718,419. So position-wise, we're very close to where we were at this time last year. On the revenue side, the biggest thing to notice is that our sales tax collections are up over $260,000 over where we were last year at this point. That, of course, has some holiday sales in it, which would count for the month of November. But the biggest bulk of our holiday sales will come in the next two reports. Also, the property tax collections, as you can see, are just within a few dollars of where it was last year at this time. It's on line one on current property taxes. Last year at this time, we had collected $1,016,110, and this year, we're at $1,015,414. So we're right at the same pace of collecting property taxes. We didn't project a big increase in that area, so we feel pretty good about that one. And also, on the sales tax, we did not project a tremendous increase in that one either, so we're feeling pretty good about the sales tax collections. Revenue-wise, we're right on pace of where we think we should be at this point. On the expenditure side, we have spent 44% of the expenditure budget. Last year at this time, we had spent 45.6%, so we feel that we have our expenses under control. And so right now, you know, we are where we are as we get ready to head into the tax collection season for us, which gives us the cash flows that we need to carry us through the summer and into the beginning of the next school year. So if anyone has any questions on that, I'll be glad to answer anything.
Any questions on the budget? Revenue?
All right.
Thank you, sir.
The next one is the attendance report. I gave you one early at the last meeting. The one you have tonight is the end of the fifth period, which ended January 21st. As you can see, we're over the 8,000 mark, at 8,049 students. Our attendance dropped 1% to 96%. That is still very, very, very good for a school system to have. We feel very fortunate that we didn't have what a lot of the other districts suffered through with flu and other things. We noticed it right before the holidays started. We started to have more kids absent, so the holiday time came at a perfect opportunity for us, so it didn't hurt as much. Our PTR, pupil teacher ratio for K through three is at 19.56 to 1, and four through six is at 21.11 for a district average of 20.10. So we're very strong in our pupil teacher ratios. We did pick up a few extra special ed pre-K students, and as you know, we will pick those up pretty much every month from now till the end of year, because as they turn three, we do, through Child Fine, get them into our school system, so that number will continue to increase. But that's the, that's the report that we have for you through the end of the fifth accounting period on attendance, and like I said, we're up over 8,049 students now.
Any questions on the attendance report?
So what is our increased population for the whole, from last year to this year? I can't find this.
I get that. Hold on. At the, at the end of last year, we had 7,555 at the very end of last year. So as you can see, as we've been saying, we've grown 500 students. And remember, we reduced the pre-K classes by 100, so we actually would have grown 600 if we hadn't made that change, but we actually grew 500 regular K through six and special ed students.
That is a... What percentage growth is that? Any idea off the top of your head?
I don't know off the top of my head.
It's over, over seven.
Over seven percent?
I think so, isn't it, Gary? Was it?
It's 6.2%. Sorry.
Redo that. I think that's wrong.
Mr. Down is wrong.
Have you know that calculator's I don't give?
I'm telling you, I think the man told me something else a month ago. Who knows?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, other business coming for the board?
I have something.
Ms. Phillips?
Just want to compliment our great chair on the article that was in the paper about him.
Yes.
Well done, well done.
Thank you. I appreciate it. My land did a good job on the topic she had to work with. Anything else coming for the board? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Ms. Smith. Thank you, Ms. Phillips. We are adjourned.
I'll let him hear you second.